The town manager's hearing on the fall town meeting warrant articles. Um, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us. So, um, this is being managed, this Zoom is being managed as a webinar. So you have the ability to enter questions, uh, through the Q and A feature in Zoom. Or you have the ability to raise your hand if you have a question. Um, we'll go through each of the warrant articles. If you have a question, you can either, uh, raise your hand or put a question in the chat, or excuse me, the Q and A. Uh, and we'll try to get to those for each of the articles before we move on. Um, we will go through each article. If there are, um, article proponents here, either boards or committees or citizen petitions, I will allow each, uh, article proponent just a moment to, uh, provide any information they would like to share with the group. And then, um, we will move on to any questions or answers on, on the article. Uh, just a reminder that we're here, um, as a factual discussion, not, uh, really to express opinion. Certainly there'll be plenty of opportunity for that one to kind of even start to, um, express opinions regarding your position on each article.
Try to answer any questions that folks may have. So with that, I think I'll go ahead and get started. Um, and again, if you have any, any questions, please, uh, raise your hand or, uh, put, uh, put a question in the Q and A. Uh, Article one of the Fall Town Meeting is our standard article that we hear boarding committee reports. So I think that should be fairly straightforward. Uh, Article two is also a standard article where, uh, we hear the, uh, report of the planning board. Article three is the first item that is in our consent agenda this fall. Uh, this is a standard article, uh, related to, um, folks who have missed maybe some, some town meeting sessions. We have no one during this fall town meeting, um, that needs to fall under this article. So Article three is being proposed to be indefinitely postponed. And then Article four is really the start of our articles, our main articles, discussion articles at, at Fall Town Meeting. Article four, uh, is being brought forward by the select board and it requires a two thirds vote. Uh, this article is related, um, to a piece of property at one sixty Forest Street. Uh, and the article will authorize the town, uh, to convey the care, custody, control and ownership of the property to the Winchester Affordable Housing Trust, uh, and to, um, have the property be restricted for affordable housing purposes, uh, in the future. Um, this article, this, this property is a, is a piece of property that the select board has been working on from, for many years. Um, starting, uh, there was, uh, some initial efforts with the original property owner who passed, passed away several years ago. And the town has been working with, uh, that property owner, property owner's estate, um, for the past three or four years to acquire this property, um, for what was the, um, intent of the, of the prior owner to have this property go towards, uh, use as an affordable unit. So, uh, this article would allow the town to, to convey that property to the trust and to restrict it for affordable housing purposes. Any questions on this article before I move forward? Okay. Uh, Articles five, six, seven and eight, uh, were discussed, uh, at the planning board's hearing, public hearing last evening. Uh, I think, uh, the vice chair of the planning board has, uh, kindly added the link in the question and answer, um, where you can view the discussion on those, those four articles. Uh, so we will not be reviewing them, um, in any detail this evening. Article nine, uh, is a majority vote. This article is being brought forward by the Climate Action Advisory Committee and the Select Board. Uh, this order, this article would, um, if approved, would enact a new chapter twenty-six of the Winchester Code of Bylaws entitled Special Specialized Energy Code, uh, for the purposes of designing, purposes of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions pursuant to two twenty-five, CMR twenty-two and twenty-three, including appendices RC and CC. Uh, in a cop, in the, uh, motion book that you should either have received or you, or you can find online, uh, is a copy of the proposed bylaw itself, which is very short. It's a one-page bylaw, but basically would allow the town to adopt the Specialized Energy Code, which is, um, a larger state initiative. So, um, I believe if there's, if there's anybody here on behalf of the proponent, proponent from the Climate Action Advisory Committee, you can please raise your hand. We're, um, happy to recognize you if there's anything that you would like to, um, speak on. Otherwise we'll take, uh, any questions. Okay. Hearing, hearing none on either front. Uh, I do see a, um, a question in the chat. Uh, did the planning board vote to support Articles five and six? I believe, and Brian, you can jump in here, but I believe the planning board did not, uh, yet. Thank you. Uh, and there's a question in the chat. Will this, uh, Article nine, uh, not allow gas stoves? Uh, so I don't know if there's anybody here on behalf of the proponent that would be able to, Climate Action Advisory Committee, that'd be able to answer that specific question? If not, that's a good one, uh, to hold over for town meeting. Okay. Not seeing anybody raise their hands. I think we'll, uh, Jennifer will keep that one, um, and bring that forward to make sure the proponents are able to answer that. Okay. Article ten, um, this is again, is a standard article where we hear the report of the Capital Planning Committee. So I don't think we'll take any, any comments on this. Um, Article eleven is the start of the true, uh, capital planning articles. So Article eleven, this item is on the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda in total requires a two thirds vote. Um, and this is a standard article we have, uh, pretty regularly where we are basically, um, we have unexpended funds from other, from prior capital projects that are being, um, returned either to the Building Stabilization Fund or the Capital Stabilization Fund for use and reappropriation for other projects. So in this case, um, we have four hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy cents. That's being returned to the Building Stabilization Fund from unused projects or, um, turnbacks from these projects. You can see the list of projects here at the bottom of the screen. And then Motion two is to return, uh, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents, um, from turnbacks from, for projects into the Capital Stabilization Funds. Any questions on this one? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Article twelve. Uh, vote on capital projects. Uh, there are a total of, let me see here. There are a total of thirteen motions under Article twelve, and I'll just step through them briefly here and, and I'll just, we can hold any questions till we get to the bottom of them in case there's any, any questions on each of the articles or each of the motions. Uh, so Motion one is for the town to vote half million dollars from the Building Stabilization Funds, um, for repairs, immediate repairs to the town hall HVAC system. Uh, we, as you likely know, we have a much larger full replacement project, uh, for town hall that we have not been able to fund at this point. And there are some true immediate needs, uh, here in town hall with respect to our HVAC system that, um, this, uh, this motion is intended to address. Um, Motion two is, uh, to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Building Stabilization Fund. And this is, um, for the purchase of a generator for the, uh, DPW complex. Motion three is to appropriate six hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund. And this is related to repairs at the Shore Road, Road Culvert, which is across the street from Winchester High School. Motion four is to appropriate two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Funds, um, for the, a new dump truck and salter from the Department of Public Works. Motion five is for the town to appropriate two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund, uh, for school district access controls. Motion six is to appropriate a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund for, um, school security cameras in the high school and McCall Middle School. Motion seven is to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund for, uh, the installation of lights at Ginn Field. Uh, some of you may recall this was, um, uh, brought forward to a prior town meeting. We need, uh, supplemental funding to complete this project, which is what this request is for. Uh, Motion eight is to appropriate ninety thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the purchase of a new, uh, trash truck cab and chassis for the Department of Public Works. Motion nine is to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Funds for a new trauma screener for use at the transfer station. Uh, I would just like to note under Motion nine that the town has received, uh, a matching earmark from the state of a hundred thousand dollars that will be used to, um, for the total purchase of this piece of equipment. Uh, Motion ten is to appropriate eighty thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund for repairs to the, um, playground surface at the Vincent Owen School. This is also, uh, a project where we've, um, after doing some additional design and seeking, uh, initial quotes for the project where we, we do need some additional funding. The cost of rubber playground, rubber surfaces has increased significantly since the original cost estimate was done, which is, uh, the need for that additional funding. Uh, Motion eleven is for the town to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars from free cash for additional engineering and design work at the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts. Uh, we did, town meeting did previously approve some funding, uh, for kind of concept level preliminary engineering out there. And this is to take that, uh, engineering work to the next, next level, next phase. Motion twelve is for the town to appropriate forty thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the, um, construction installation of, um, rapid flashing beacons. Those are the, uh, the lights that you see around town at, um, at crosswalks to help, uh, improve safety in those locations. Motion thirteen is to appropriate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from water and for retained earnings for a new trailer generator. And that is, that completes, uh, the motions under Article twelve. I'm happy to take any questions. You can raise your hands and be recognized or again, put your question in the Q and A. Um, there's a question, uh, has there been any discussion at looking at the Winter Pond Outlet to Wedge Pond while doing, doing the tennis court work? Um, so there is, uh, DPW is in the process of doing some investigations regarding the condition of that outlet at Winter Pond. Uh, for those who may not be aware, there is, um, Winter Pond, we have a, what we call Big Winter Pond and Little Winter Pond. Little Winter Pond has an outlet, um, that goes through the town cemetery and ultimately goes out Palmer Street, down Palmer Street and discharges into Wedge Pond. Um, so it's a, a long run of pipe before it exits out to Wedge Pond. DPW has, is doing some initial investigations regarding the, um, condition of the pipe closer to Little Winter Pond. And I, it, we're not ready, um, to make any recommendations regarding a capital request at this point, but it's certainly something that we're continuing to look at. I think Patty Brian McCarthy has raised his hand. Go ahead, Brian. I think you should be able to speak.
Thanks, Beth. I just had a quick question and I, I have the package, the came today, but I haven't opened it yet.
Sure.
But any, um, action that is additional funds for a project that was already started? Is what was already spent and why it was spent called out in the documentation?
Um, it is not called out in the motion book. I would recognize Roger McPeak, who's the chair of the Capital Planning Committee. He may be able to address whether that is detailed in the, um, Capital Planning Report.
Uh, it is not detailed in the Capital Planning Report, however, we will be able to pro, we can provide that information. Um, if you want to know, so for example, on, uh, Gin Lights, uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars was previously appropriated. Some amount of that was, uh, went into engineering where we found ourselves. And I, I can't call off the top of my head what, how much was actually expended for the engineering. Well, that's when we found out that we were, um, underwater, if you will, and needed additional appropriation. On the, uh, uh, um, VO, uh, appropriation, four hundred thousand dollars. It was a joint appropriation for both VO and for, um, Lincoln Playground. Uh, but the, uh, the place that we ran into trouble on was, uh, in, in VO. And that's what the additional eighty thousand dollars is going toward. As Beth mentioned, um, just costs of materials have basically gone up. We haven't, we have not expanded the scope of either of those projects.
Yeah, I, I just think that's important information be, for you guys to have upfront in part of the discussion and just being open about it. Um, you know, if costs are up, but that means the estimates weren't good. Um, if the estimates didn't take into account where the costs were. Or we were too far behind when we, when the estimate was made versus when we bought.
It, it's not uncommon for us to get into a project where we've taken some initial information from the engineers and said, we believe this is the correct amount and then open up a project and either, uh, circumstances such as materials have changed or, and if, uh, as you may understand, we've been going through some pretty rapid inflationary times between the point that we did the initial work and now. And also we may, uh, go into more advanced engineering work and find that something, uh, was there that we didn't get in our first scan. So, yeah, it would be nice if we were, if we were good all the time upfront. Uh, and we try to do that, but we do get into engineering aspects of it and find out that we have to change and, and come back for more money. We don't like it any more than you do. We're more than happy to provide the information. Uh, and I'll, I'll make sure that in our presentation at town meeting, those initial, uh, funding requests are mentioned. It, it's, we're not trying to hide anything by any means. It's just, that's, that's the state of the world that we find ourselves in.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I just think being upfront with that initially makes it come across better, in my opinion.
I will make sure that that gets mentioned.
Thanks.
Thank you both Roger and Brian. Uh, Candace Van Eken has her hand raised. We'll recognize her, please.
Candace, you're on. Ask her to unmute.
There I go. Okay, thank you. Uh, on Motion eleven, the Packer, uh, Ellis Tennis Courts.
Yes.
Uh, town meeting made an earlier appropriation. What was that for?
Yeah, so that original appropriation, which Roger, you can help me out with the exact amount, but that was for, sorry?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand, thank you. Uh, that was just for very, very preliminary engineering, which I would consider kind of like concept level, um, to hire a, a firm to, um, do a site survey, which is actually quite expensive to lay out some initial, um, ideas of like what it, what the layout could look like out there as well as, uh, we have both, um, uh, engineering firm who specializes in water resources and, and, um, drainage components because that site is in the flood plain. And then we also have, um, kind of a, a, a separate designer who specializes in sport court, uh, tennis court layouts. Uh, he's worked on other projects in town, um, such as the turf field. So, um, that initial seventy-five thousand dollars is really just to kind of have a, you know, lay the groundwork, understand what's out there on the site from a survey perspective. Um, and then to start doing some initial concept plans. This request is to kind of take that design to the next level.
Is that document available for town meeting members to look at?
Uh, that's a good question. There was, um, a presentation made to the select board. Um, I want to say, maybe at some point over the summer, and we would be happy to share the presentation that was made to the board, um, with others, with town meeting members.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the capital articles? Or the capital articles under Article twelve? There's more capital articles to come. Okay. I will move on to Article thirteen. Uh, so Article thirteen, this should look fairly familiar. We've had, uh, a conversation about these projects, um, at quite a few town meetings over the past couple of years, and we've funded, um, several studies. So this proj, this Article thirteen is to, um, pay for, um, the construction related to roof repairs, um, and construction administration and other engineering services at the town hall and the town library, as well as renovation of the town hall clock tower and also replacement of the windows at the town library. Uh, the estimated cost for all these projects is four million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, this article is co-sponsored by both the Capital Planning Committee and the Select Board. Um, and part of the reason that for that co-sponsor is what you see here highlighted in red is the proposed, um, funding plan for this. So what they've, what we've proposed is to take two hundred thousand dollars, two, excuse me, two million dollars from free cash and also to borrow, uh, two million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pay for these projects. Roger, is there anything you'd like to add related to these?
Uh, extremely excited about moving this forward. Um, the, the, the big numbers that you're seeing there are related to the slate roofs on, on both, uh, the library and, and the town hall. Uh, it's extremely expensive to, to do that. We've, uh, are hoping to get some, uh, benefits of scale and benefits of adjacency by putting these projects together instead of breaking them up so that, um, we could get a, a, a good common bid out for the slate work, the slate roof work on, on both of those buildings and also, uh, being next to each other. I, I'm, we're thrilled about this project, these projects.
I concur. Thank you. Uh, I see Michelle Prior, Chair of the Select Board, has her hand raised. Go ahead, Michelle. I can't hear you, Michelle.
Thank you, Beth. Took me a minute to come in as a panelist. I just wanted to echo, uh, Roger's enthusiasm for this. And Roger and I are trying to figure out who's presenting to which piece on this article. But as, uh, some of you may recall, my Article one presentation from the Spring Town Meeting, we had some pictures of damage to ceilings, damage to walls, uh, broken windows at the library. So being able to get this project done in this next, uh, sort of construction season, um, is important. It's the envelope of the library and, uh, the town hall, both really, you know, high-use public buildings. That's all I wanted to say.
Any questions on Article thirteen? Okay. Moving on, Article fourteen. Uh, this article is sponsored by the Capital Planning Committee and requires a two thirds vote. This is another project, um, that you've heard a lot about over the years. Um, this is, uh, funding to pay for roof repairs and replacements, including construction administration services and engineering at the McCall School and the Ambrose Elementary School. Uh, the total, uh, estimated cost for this project is, uh, two million, nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, of which, uh, one million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars will be transferred from the Building Stabilization Fund. And, uh, the remainder will be borrowed. So just over, uh, one million, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for that project. Um, Roger, anything you'd like to add on this one?
Yes, um, this is replacement of some of the oldest portions of McCall where we've experienced active leaks. Um, but, uh, obviously we're not replacing the brand-new sections that we've, that we've just, uh, built. Um, there will be, um, three to five years further down the road, uh, additional work that will need to be done on the roofs. But this is a, this is a big chunk and of, of the, uh, probably eight or nine different roof systems that exist on top of that building.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions on Article fourteen? Uh, Chris Dixon has his hand raised. Go ahead, Chris.
I just to add a little more color to what Roger said, just to end to clarify. While most of this is around replacement at McCall, there's very little in the way of replacement at Ambrose. It's mostly repair to extend the life of that roof. And we're looking to FY twenty-nine and FY thirty for a full replacement on Ambrose. So don't want people to think we're replacing the full roof quite yet, but this is going to get us a few more years of life out of Ambrose.
Thank you. Um, Carol Savage has a question in the chat. Has there been a discussion of what projects might be eligible for CPA funding? Should it pass? Where does the long-range capital plan stand? I understand this must be an urgent project that cannot wait. Uh, yet, um, certainly there is, uh, there has been discussion, um, about which projects potentially could be eligible for CPA. Um, obviously we'll know for sure, uh, what happens on November fifth. Um, I do think this is a project that has been many years in the making. And as you said, it's, is a critical project with these roof repairs, both at town hall and the library, which, and these two elementary schools, all of which have, um, ongoing, especially the library in particular, ongoing leaks that need to be addressed. Um, so there, you know, we certainly, um, as part of the capital planning process and as part of the town manager's capital plan, um, that will be put together, uh, for January fifteenth per the charter, uh, we'll be doing kind of a deeper dive into those projects that we have, um, that are coming up for funding. Um, which of those are eligible for CPA funds? Um, just so everybody's aware, the CPA process requires there to be a, a separate, um, CPA implementation committee who, um, was established, should the CPA be approved. Was this, there was a bylaw adopted at Spring Town Meeting establishing that committee. Um, and that committee would be the one to review all CPA-related funding requests. And then ultimately those funding requests would come to town meeting, um, for approval through a similar appropriation process from the CPA funds. So, um, we're, there's a subcommittee that's meeting right now to look at ways in which, um, you know, that capital planning committee, uh, the, the CPA committee, should it be approved and the capital planning committee can, uh, work together to, to, um, make sure we're, have as streamlined a process as possible, um, if, if that's approved. So, um, any other questions on Article fourteen? Okay. We will move on to Article fifteen. Uh, Article fifteen, um, would have town meeting vote to appropriate eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the Building Stabilization Fund towards the repair and remediation work associated with deterioration of the concrete at the Winchester High School. Uh, and I would recognize Chris Nixon, uh, who is the Vice Chair of the EFPBC and also a member of the school committee, uh, if you'd like to add anything specific on this project.
Thank you, Beth. So I think the, the most important thing to, uh, explain to town meeting, and I think we've, we've spoken about the concrete, state of concrete at the high school and the urgency about repair and remediation at the last two town meetings, um, is that we have two things going on with the first floor slab. You have carbonation, uh, contamination from below in the crawl space. That's sort of attacking the concrete from below. Uh, that is one chemical pathway that has one fix or repair. And then on the top side, that is the floor we walk on when we enter the high school. That's chloride contamination. That's salts. Uh, we've shared that with town meeting in the spring. Uh, what this Article fifteen actually seeks is funding to address the former. Um, we ran a series of mock-up tests for a surface-applied corrosion inhibitor over the summer. Uh, the effectiveness of this is absolutely proven in the lab. Uh, surface-applied corrosion inhibitor was applied in June. We waited thirty days, took more cores from the concrete and were able to, um, confirm the penetration of this product, which will, uh, stop the carbonation that's happening. It'll stop that deterioration that we're concerned about from below. So that's, um, that's some good news. Um, the cost estimate for this work, um, actually came in a little lower than what we had been expecting. And so that's reflected in this number with a very conservative contingency. The distinction I would make, uh, Beth, if I may, is that the top-side work is not included in this request. The, the bu, the majority of the cost is associated with the repair from below. Uh, there is some limited, uh, top-side demolition and repair work that's going to be needed. Uh, the EFPBC- Uh, the EFPBC and our engineering and planning uh, department. Did not feel like we had that fully designed and vetted with an estimate we were a hundred percent confident with for fall town meeting. So our intention, if this should pass, um, is because this is work that can happen in the crawl space. We can actually get started on this repair in article fifteen this school year. We would come back in the spring for a supplemental request for the top-side repair work. That has to be summer work anyway. And we'll get into more detail on that in the presentation. This is one large bite at the apple. Just want people to understand we'll come back for a second bite in the spring.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, um, Select Board Member Anthea Brady has her hand raising. Go ahead, Anthea.
Sorry, Beth, that was an accidental uh, hand raise.
No problem. Any questions on article fifteen? Okay, seeing, oh, there's one that came up in the chat here. Um, so it says, is this concrete repair work needed across the entire high school? Per floor or just parts of it? And then would, would the repair work be disruptive? Like when parts of the school need to be closed off while the repairs are happening? Chris, do you want to answer that one?
Sure, appreciate the question. Um, so it depends if we're talking about the repair from below or the repair up above. Down below, um, the surface-applied corrosion inhibitor that we seek to apply with the funding under article fifteen. Is going to be applied to about ninety-two percent of plus minus uh, the first floor. So virtually every square foot of the first floor will be treating it from below. This is going to address the areas where we visibly can see deterioration and areas frankly where we don't see it yet, but we have every expectation. The carbonation front is moving through the concrete. However, none of this work from below will be disruptive to students and staff above. Now, if I flip that, um, with respect to the top-side work, this is where we have finished floor, whether it's vinyl tile or carpet tile. That you can actually see has sort of raised and cracked. There will be some limited uh, demolition there. We're going to have to pull up some flooring. We may have to pull up some uh, wall track. We think it's going to be fairly limited. Uh, we, we estimate it's about point six percent of the first floor area needs this repair. And it, and it is largely, it co- it's coalesced really in two different wings of the high school. It's not sort of spread randomly throughout. Um, and as I said a moment ago, the, the intention for the top-side repair would be um, that would be work in the summer. Um, following um, a presentation and, and support from town meeting in the spring. So that's not a part of article fifteen.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, there's a question in the Q and A. If all articles seeking free cash are approved, is there a scorecard available which shows the transition? From what we have now, what is asked for, what reserves could drop to, and what the percent operating reserves would look like? So um, we currently have, let me pull up. Okay. Um, so in the uh, memo that uh, came from me in the packet with your motion book. Uh, is a little brief summary on free cash and our current operating reserve position. So uh, DOR did um, certify our free cash at uh, just over twenty-four million dollars this fall, which was. Uh, certified as the, at the close of um, FY, as of July first this year. Um, the Comptroller's Office has calculated that our operating reserves are approximately twenty percent. Of the FY twenty-four general fund revenue. This is up from uh, eighteen point six four at the close of FY twenty-three. Um, if all of the articles that are proposed to use free cash are approved, and, and I just want to note that article fifteen. Is from the building stabilization fund. So I think this is a more general question, not just a question about uh, article fifteen. But if all of the articles um, or the requesting free cash are approved, um, it's just over three point four eight million dollars worth of requests. Uh, we have not recalculated what the um, operating reserve would be. Uh, that's always um. It's kind of like a moving target when you're not talking about uh, you know, a certified free cash amount. Uh, but that's certainly something I can work the comptroller um, to nail down a little bit better uh, for town meeting. So I'm happy to take any follow-up questions either on that piece or on article fifteen itself. Okay. Seeing none. Um. We will move on to article sixteen. Um, so article sixteen is uh, requires a two-third vote. This is um, sponsored by the Capital Planning Committee. This article seeks funding, two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and funding to uh, design and engineer and investigate uh, water quality issues that are currently ongoing. Uh, in the water system located on Cambridge Street and, and the abutting uh, neighborhoods. So basically this is from Everdav headed towards Arlington. Um, and this is. Proposed to be a borrowing because we expect there to be additional in um, engineering and certainly construction work that comes out of this. So this is really just the first step in the process. This is kind of similar to what we typically do on large projects where we expect there to be. Um, a much larger construction project coming along that we wrap the initial engineering services into that borrowing. So I'm happy to take any questions on this article sixteen. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to article seventeen. Um, for longstanding town meeting members, this will be something that you recognize. We've uh, done quite a bit of work across the town. Over the past twenty to twenty-five years to reduce what's called infiltration and inflow into our sewer system. Um, and so this is, we've done quite a lot of work on the west side of town and now we are moving on to work on the east side of town. So this project um, is a one point seven five million dollar project. Um, to start investigating uh, and completing um, capital improvements on the east side sewer rehab- rehabilitation project. And the east side sanitary sources, sewer evaluation survey. Uh, and the purpose of this is to investigate and remove infiltration and inflow sources and to repair structural defects in the town sewer system. Um, oops. These projects, um, we are able to use funding available from the MWRA. So they have um. They have funding that we've utilized. The town of Winchester has utilized pretty much every, every penny that we've been able to get from, from the MWRA over, over the past many years. Um, this project is specifically funded um, through. Eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars of it is a hundred percent loan and then eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars of it is a seventy-five percent grant. Twenty-five percent loan and those are the programs that are available from the MWR, MWRA. I'm happy to take any questions on this article. Well, so the question is, will articles sixteen and seventeen be funded from uh, water and sewer enterprise funds? So um, article seventeen is a borrowing authorization and because the town is a chapter one-ten community. Um, a portion of those um, is that is transferred over to the real estate taxes. And uh, article sixteen, um, which I mentioned was the um, was also the borrowing authorization. The two hundred thousand dollars would be similar. Any further questions on articles sixteen or seventeen? Okay, moving on to article eighteen. Article eighteen requires a majority vote and it is co-sponsored by the EFPBC and the Select Board. Uh, this is an article that is also um, something you saw this spring where we discussed the need to replace. Uh, the floor in the Winchester High School Gymnasium. Uh, that project was bid earlier this year and as a result of those bid. Bid results that came in, uh, the project came in higher than the, the original estimate. So we were requesting additional six hundred and seventy thousand dollars from free cash. Uh, to, to be able to award that contract and move forward that construction. Um, and I know Chris Nixon is here from, again, the EFPBC. Uh, if you have anything you'd like to add for that. Article, this article, Chris, go ahead.
Um, I'm happy to. Can you hear me, Beth?
Yes, thank you.
So um, we really do appreciate that the board, the board put some ARPA money towards this project. Uh, when we last met at town meeting, there was an appropriation, um, both from. The overlay fund in the amount of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars and then two hundred and forty thousand dollars from free cash. Um, uh, we have a bidder, um, who although not obligated to do so, has uh, was willing to hold their number. I mean, typically these numbers are good for anywhere from two to four weeks. Um, management reached out and asked if they'd hold their number through fall town meeting. They agreed to do so. Uh, so that six hundred and seventy is a figure that absolutely gets us to a contract, gets the project on along with a very conservative. Contingency and some unit cost prices should equipment need to be, um, some of the relocated equipment like basketball hoops, if those need to be replaced, if anything breaks. Um, the piece, I guess I would like to share if it's, if it's okay, Beth. I, I hope, I presume the Select Board did vote to accept some gifts Monday night. Um, the Winchester Basketball Association and the Winchester Sports Foundation. Um, in recognition of sort of the situation that we're in after the bid opening, um, have generously um, agreed to contribute. Uh, seventy-five thousand dollars towards the project. I think the board voted to accept those donations Monday night. Um, the EFPBC will be voting this coming Monday to amend the funding motion and I think the board, uh, Select Board will do the same on the seventh. Um, so we can back seventy-five thousand dollars out of that. The donation is specifically to the overall cost of the project. And to reduce our reliance on free cash. Um, so I believe that amendment, Beth, will be for um, five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. If my math is right. Um, so that's some welcome news and we certainly appreciate their support. I think they stepped up in particular in, in recognizing the cost of some of the equipment. This project is not just a re-floring of the gymnasium. It, we're turning the room ninety degrees, bringing in some new equipment, really kind of reprogramming the space. So it, it, it's going to do just such a better job serving the needs of our athletes and, and our community.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any questions on article eighteen? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to article nineteen. Um, article nineteen is a consent agenda item. Um, this is also a kind of a standard article we've had over the years. Um, again, it's related to funding that's available from the MWRA. This, in this case, it's a local water system assistance program, LWSAP. Uh, there's a hundred and seven thousand dollars currently available to the town of Winchester. Uh, it's a funding that if we don't use it, we'll lose it. Um, and this is a ten-year zero percent interest loan that we get from the MWRA. And so we would be looking to uh, seek authorization um, from town meeting um, to move forward with the borrowing through the MWRA program. For this funding, so that we can put it towards uh, various water quality projects in town. Any questions on article nineteen? Okay, seeing none. Uh, article twenty. Um, article twenty is a majority vote and this article is sponsored by Michelle Pryor, who is a Select Board Member. And I will recognize Michelle if she'd like to say a few words uh, related to this article.
Thank you, Beth. Um, this article has been um, shared with the Decennial Review Committee and the Committee on Government Regulations. Uh, it is on the fall town meeting to remedy what is currently a conflict in our bylaw and perhaps interpretation of what holding town office means. Um, if you receive the motion book, there's a background that shows, you know, decades of appointing FinCom members, be they current or former or. Liaisons from the, the Finance Committee to EFPBC, uh, the Wright Law Farm Conservancy at one time. Transfer Station Working Group, a Capital Planning Committee, a variety, retiree health insurance, a variety of committees. And by clarifying that Finance Committee members don't hold other office, other town office. But they can sit on other committees if permitted uh, by a vote of the town meeting or permitted in the bylaw. This is trying to clean that up.
Thank you. Um, open the floor to any questions on article twenty. Go ahead, Chris. Chris Nixon has his hand raised.
Sure, so um, I, I presume, I guess I have a two-part question. I presume, I, and I know Ms. Pryor had put forward um, an earlier proposal to the board. And then what's here on the warrant is sort of a, a, a second, a second swing. Um, is it my understanding that this article as presented, this will address the conflict we have in the bylaw with respect to capital planning? Uh, given that that requirement is that FinCom has two appointments to capital planning, one of whom shall be a sitting member. So this would address that issue, is that right?
Correct, it would still permit a sitting member and another member, be they sitting or not.
Gotcha. Um, and then the second point I want to make, and it's only because um, I, I do hear the acronym EFPBC thrown out there from time to time on this issue. Um, the, the established, the constitution of the EF, EFPBC, who's appointed to the EFPBC with respect to FinCom. Has been changed four or five times since the EFPBC was first established in nineteen ninety-five. And though the first motion when the EFPBC was established called for a sitting FinCom member to be on the EFPBC. That requirement uh, fell away maybe twenty years ago. Um, and so as we understand it, there, there is no such requirement. There are three general members of the EFPBC, one of whom is appointed by the Finance Committee. So it's not clear to me um, that this addresses the EFPBC in any explicit way. Um, unless perhaps if, I don't know if Michelle or Beth has a different understanding, but. I, I, I keep hearing the committee that I'm the Vice Chair of keep getting mentioned here and I'm not sure this really addresses any issue with the EFPBC.
So Chris, I'll, I'll certainly save some more uh, background for next week. This is any committee. Um, whereby FinCom could be included. It doesn't call out one committee at a time. So it's not meant to be committee-specific. It's meant to be, members can be appointed or service on another committee as permitted by a bylaw. A vote of the town meeting or the town charter.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
Uh, Michelle, there's a, a question in the Q and A uh, from Bill Band. What problem is the article trying to solve?
Um, thanks, Bill. So at spring town meeting, um, specifically related to the CPA bylaw, there was a, a question brought up. That as we had a working group to work through the CPA implementation, a group that I chaired. Um, after the passage of the bylaw at the spring, there was a question brought from the floor that a sitting member of Finance, Finance Committee. Could not be on that committee of the town meeting and of the bylaw. And the town council's interpretation was that serving on an appointed finance committee was equivalent to holding town office. And the current charter says holds no other town office. So we are trying to differentiate appointed committees and service. Uh, where they're invited to holding town office uh, not, is not equivalent to being on the finance committee.
Thanks, Michelle. Any further question on article twenty? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to article twenty-one. Article twenty-one is a majority vote and this is a citizen's petition, uh, which involves uh, some amendments to the town's. Chapter fourteen of our code of bylaws, which uh, relates to the preservation of historic uh, significant buildings. Um, I would open the floor if the, if there's a representative from the proponent here, if you have anything that you would like to um, specifically. Discuss on this article.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Pichudo. I'm the petitioner.
Great, go ahead. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you. Um, just that um, in regards to when um, commercial demolition happens. The abutters are notified of such demolition, but that does not happen when um, it's a residential demolition. Um, and so just asking to extend the same courtesy on a residential demolition that people are made aware of. That a demolition is going to be happening, um, that there's going to be noise, possibly debris that, you know, can fly in the neighborhood. And, you know, to be aware for safety of um, animals and children. As for um, the protection of um, trees, um, the same situation when there's a large amount of construction. That the builder be asked to mitigate damage to trees that form, form, that are boundaries between um, properties. Um, there's many homes in the Winchester that instead of a fence have um, trees. That are twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years old, um, that are, are damaged. Um, when there's like building, a significant amount of building, which can easily be mitigated with just some construction fencing and some awareness.
Thank you, Cynthia. Uh, any questions for the proponent on article twenty-one? Uh, there's a question in the chat. Can you clarify what the town council said on Monday regarding section F? Um, so I do not want to speak for town council, but I know that town council raised some concerns. Uh, regarding section F and I will uh, certainly, I think Town Council Jade Telman will be prepared. Uh, to speak at town meeting about any specific concerns he may have regarding that section. to speak at town meeting about any specific concerns he may have regarding that section.
And and Beth, let me weigh in with what I believe it is, Brian, which is the the Historical Commission's purview relative to demolition and and how this was within their purview or could be enforced or not by the Historical Commission. But certainly, town council will be more explicit, more available next week.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article twenty-one? Roger Wilson has a question. How is near the boundary defined? Have that go to the proponent if you have any.
So trees are usually put within a foot of the boundary line on either side of the property?
Thank you. Any further questions on Article twenty-one? Seeing none, we will move on to Article twenty-two. Article twenty-two is also a citizen's petition. This requires a majority vote. This petition seeks to implement term limits on several elected positions, moderator, select board, school committee, planning board, and board of health. And I will recognize the petitioner if you have anything that you'd like to present on this article.
Hi, thanks so much. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Wonderful. So, yeah, so this article is something that I have had a number of conversations with different folks over the years, both just, you know, average citizens and also members of town meeting. And I think the the interest and the intent of the article is to really encourage more folks to get involved in our elected offices. And so the intention of the article is to set term limits so that will encourage more people to run. You'll see in the information that I'm going to provide, ten years of election data. To my knowledge, there was only one, excuse me, there was only one instance of an incumbent actually losing reelection. That could not be entirely correct, but that's my understanding. So I certainly welcome any clarifications on that over the last ten years. So the point would be that it's very difficult to unseat an incumbent. So I the belief is among many that people choose not to run against incumbents and only wait until there are quote-unquote open seats when somebody steps down and then there's an, there's a seat that doesn't have an incumbent. And so I think that slows maybe the innovation of ideas. And so folks were interested in this article, and I've had a number of current elected officials who believe that this would be a great idea. And so I just look forward to some discussion around it. I will add that the town council and I did go back and forth over the impact of this article. His belief and my belief are different, and I appreciate that. And so there may be some folks at town meeting who are interested in amending this article to have different language that would give it perhaps a different level of impact. And I'm I'm certainly open to that, and I'm also open to it being more of a just kind of informative expression of the will of town meeting, if if this is something that they are interested in.
Can you introduce yourself? Because there's a question in the chat.
Oh, yeah, sure. This is this is Seamus Brady, and one final point that I did want to make, because this is a great question I've been asked already by a few folks. So some folks have questioned why this is not all townwide elected offices. And so initially it was, but in my conversations with different folks, both those elected and those who are town meeting members elected to town meeting or just people who are citizens of Winchester, they felt that the positions that were not included, there was some benefit to having people in those positions perhaps longer than six years. So that was certainly the opinion of some. I thought it was a reasonable argument, the arguments that they made. So that was what caused me to amend the article before I first submitted it to exclude some positions and to include some positions. All right, let me take a look at the question.
Yeah, so Seamus, I'll I'll run through the questions here. The first is from Ann Sarah. How is this an actual article? What is it modifying? What code is it proposing where I don't see how we can vote for this? So and and this was stated at the Select Boards Meeting on Monday night. Town Council's position that is that is it's currently written, this is a non-binding article. It's not modifying either the Code of Bylaws or the the Charter. And I'm sure the town council will have more to add.
Yes, so that's.
Town meeting. Yep.
Yes, so that's a great question. So I think if someone wanted to amend it, there are multiple ways that it could actually have an impact. But if it were to be voted on as is, and so to Ann's point, it could be not, I wouldn't necessarily classify it as a test. I would classify it as an expression of what town meeting believed, right? So if a majority of people voted for this, it would mean a majority of town meeting members think we should have term limits. It wouldn't put them into effect in its current form, but it would at least, you know, I think it would at least express the sentiment to folks, and I think that in itself is important.
The next question is.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the next question's from Brian McCarthy. What is the reason for eighteen calendar years, say, versus, say, three years?
So the reason for the eighteen calendar years is, I think, again, I don't want to encourage people to be semi-incumbents, right? So if you're just off for three years, you're still going to be a very well-known name, and the probability of you winning and getting reelected, I think, is very high. If you look at national politics, this is a common pattern where people will come back and get reelected to positions, you know, again, just based on their name, because they've been elected before. And so I think this is trying to avoid that. And so it's not saying that, you know, somebody could serve on school committee for six years, and then they could go serve on Select Board for six years. So I don't really think it's limiting anybody, but it is discouraging people from just cycling on and off the same board every three years. So that's the reason for the eighteen is really to make it impactful. So, you know, in some ways, it's generational. So, for example, if you're on school committee for six years, then that's it for that generation of kids, and you can be back on school committee after that, right? And the same thing for Select Board. So if you're on Select Board for six years, you know, then you're really looking at the next generation of Winchester citizens before you get to hold that office again. You know, I think if you look again at the national level, we limit our obviously president to to two, four-year terms. And then depending on the state, different states have different limitations on their governors, different cities have different limitations on their mayors. And so if you think of our elected bodies as executive, and I would, I would see them that way, and town meeting is a legislative body, and it's rare to see legislative bodies have term limits, but it's actually fairly common to see executive bodies have term limits. And I think that's what this article is trying to get at.
Thank you, Seamus. The one last question on this was from Brian Venalia regarding, just, I think, a follow-up, very similar to Ms. Sarah's question. Is this proposal enforceable as written?
So, no, I I appreciate that question, but just to elaborate, I think, you know, again, the town attorney believes that it's not. Other attorneys have weighed in to me that it is. So obviously, I respect the town attorney's opinion. I respect their opinion. And as I said, I'm also open to, and I believe there may be folks who are interested in amending it to make it enforceable. It's a simple change of language. And I I must confess, I I submitted the article, and then there was some back and forth with myself and town council, and I was trying to work with him to get it to be something that was enforceable, but unfortunately, through our conversations, and, you know, Beth was on those conversations, as was the moderator, we were not able to really land on some language that would be enforceable. I think I found some after the fact. But unfortunately, at that point, it was impossible for me to change the language, though, as I understand it, you know, anyone would be welcome to offer amendments as town meeting members, which is always their right, and I I certainly would welcome any amendments that would seek to alter the language to make it enforceable.
Thanks, Seamus. Any further questions on Article twenty-two? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Article twenty-three. Article twenty-three is a majority vote. This article is being brought forward by the Committee on Government Regulations. I think this is the first article of many that is to come from the Committee of Government Regulations as they complete their decennial review of our Code of Bylaws. This article in particular is looking to remove gender pronouns from the town's Code of Bylaws where they appear and to replace them with specific titles or other specific gender-neutral language. So I'm not sure if there's anybody here from the Committee on Government Regulations. I'm you're welcome to add to anything I've just stated. Okay, seeing no one, I'm happy to take any questions that people may have. Oh, Brian has said that they had a public hearing that was recorded. Is that a question or is that a statement? I'm not aware that they had a public hearing. They've certainly had, they've been meeting, I think, almost weekly for the past. Okay, thank you, Brian. They had a public meeting and it was a public hearing, and it was recorded. So perhaps anybody from the Committee on Government Regulations can send, if they could send us any information about that, we can, I'm happy to share it. And Carol Savage says it would be helpful to see a few examples when they present this. So there's actually in the motion book, which I was just mailed out yesterday, so folks might not have received it yet, but there is a copy up on the town's website under town meeting. There is a detailed, it's not specifically in the motion, but the the handout that is referenced in the motion is included in the motion book that shows all the changes that are proposed as part of this article. Any further questions on Article twenty-three? Seeing none. We will move on to Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four is sort of a standard article that we that we have from year to year, relates to movement of funds from the town's parking meter fund to the town center parking account to pay for expenses associated with the town town center parking lots, and then also from that same parking meter fund to the Wedgemere parking account to pay for expenses associated with the Wedgemere commuter parking lot. Should be noted that the Wedgemere lot is primarily owned by D C R, so the town does have a cost-sharing agreement with D C R, and we're required to pay a portion of the revenues from that that's generated at the Wedgemere lot to D C R. So these these funds assist with that payment. This is a consent agenda item, two-thirds vote on the consent agenda. Happy to take any questions on this one. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Article twenty-five. This article is being brought forward by the Select Board. This is a two-thirds vote. This again is is one you've seen over the past couple of town meetings. You may recall that in spring of twenty twenty-two, the town meeting established a healthcare and health insurance stabilization fund. And the goal of that, the the Select Board did adopt a set of guidelines about making recommendations for transferring funds into that stabilization fund as well as funds out of that stabilization funds, which typically happen in the spring as we're talking about budget season. The proposal for this year is to appropriate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash into that stabilization fund, which is almost the amount of the turnback in the health insurance budget from F Y twenty, F Y twenty-four. And the goal is to be able to use that stabilization fund going forward to help stabilize costs associated or budget impacts associated with the town's health insurance increases. I know Michelle Pryor is here. Michelle, if you want to add anything to that as as Chair of Select Board?
I will add that when we take this up during town meeting, we will have, I think, some estimated costs for next year's health insurance, which I think will hopefully put a finer point on needing to have some money set aside for the specific purpose.
Thank you. Question in the chat, is the current balance of the fund in the materials? Yes, it is in the background. And I can tell you that the current balance of the stabilization fund is just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any further questions on Article twenty-five? Move on to Article twenty-six. Article twenty-six is currently on the consent agenda, but I believe that we may have a late-breaking motion under this article, so it's likely that this will be pulled off the consent agenda. But currently, this is a standard article we have every year. This is sponsored by the Finance Committee. This is basically to take any actions that we need to appropriate funds for F Y twenty-five departmental budgets. Right now, as I mentioned, there's there's two motions under this. The first is to transfer seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-eight cents from free cash to the F Y twenty-five I T department budget. The I T department had several projects that they were working on towards the end of F Y twenty-four, which unfortunately, we were not able to complete. So those those funds did close out in F Y twenty-four, and they're looking to complete those projects now in F Y twenty-five. So this amount is basically almost an exact offset to what they what they were able to turn back during the prior fiscal year. But they're requesting the funds in F Y twenty-five so they can do those projects. And then the second motion is to transfer twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents from free cash to replenish the reserve fund so that they can get up to their, go back up to their full four hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year. And then, again, as I mentioned, I expect there to be another motion potentially coming in under Article twenty-six. So we will likely have that either sent out to town meeting members ahead of time, or you will have that at table on November seventh. Any questions on this article? Okay. Moving on to Article twenty-seven. So twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are all sponsored by the Finance Committee related to F Y twenty-five budget items. Article twenty-seven in particular is related to the F Y twenty-five Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. This is pretty standard. Every year, when we, when the budget's approved in the spring, we have some estimated information from M W R A about about user fees and other service charges from them. So we have a, we have a standard article every year that kind of trues up the actual expenses in the enterprise fund. So in this article, in particular, we're voting, town meeting, we're voting to increase by twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, the F Y twenty-five funding from property, the property tax levy in accordance with Chapter one-ten. And then also increasing the F Y twenty-five funding from water and sewer receipts by nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Any questions on Article twenty-seven? Roger, I see you have a question in the chat, which is what is the action? Maybe that's an old question that I've is this related to Article twenty-seven? Go ahead.
I was asking about Article twenty-six and because they didn't spend the money one year. But what was it about? What were they spending the money on? And 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 why are we passing it now?
Sure. Yeah, so there are some they have various improvements in municipal buildings, including the installation of some wireless access points in in six buildings, as well as some additional network drops in Town Hall and the replacement of a switch in the Public Safety Building, which is the items that added up to that almost eighteen thousand dollar request in the I T department. And I'm sure I T Director Matt Griffin, who's always at town meeting, will be happy to provide any additional information if you have questions on that.
So so they, it it was, these were items that were specifically budgeted but not executed?
Yeah, I think it was just in terms of the timing with the availability of our vendor to complete the Yeah, I think it was just in terms of the timing with the availability of our vendor to complete the project by the end of the fiscal year. So you know, for projects that we do within each fiscal year, the project has to be completed by June thirtieth. And these specific projects were not able to be completed by that, in that timeframe. So they, you know, they returned the money as part of a turnback in their FY twenty-four budget. Projects still need to be done, so they're requesting some additional funding in FY twenty-five to complete the projects.
Okay.
Any other questions on Article twenty-six or twenty-seven? Oops, sorry about that. We will move on to Article twenty-eight. So Article twenty-eight is again a standard article related, this one is in relation to the town's Recreation Department's Enterprise Fund. And so this article specifically introduced the Recreation Department's receipts for FY twenty-five by $257,358.16 and fund the budgetary shortfall by the same amount of retained earnings. There's a really nice background in the motion book about this. This is something that our Comptroller Stacy Ward and our Recreation Department Director work very closely on every year. The, in accordance with the Department of Revenue, increases each year must be certified with the DOR, and they cannot exceed the previous year's receipts without a primary source defined, defining the increase. So to fund any additional anticipated revenue, the budget must be adjusted and funded using retained earnings, which is what we're here doing this year. So any questions on this, which I would probably refer to our Comptroller or Recreation Director and have to get back to you about any specifics on it, but I'm happy to happy to relay any questions that folks may have tonight to them. Okay, seeing none. We will move on to Article twenty-nine. This item is on the consent agenda, requires a two-thirds vote. I want to just mention that as we were putting this presentation together, we discovered a Scrivener's error in the motion book. So this motion is to vote to appropriate $199,070.60 from the PEG Access and Cable-related funds to be used for PEG-related programming and services. And that text that is highlighted in yellow and the strike through and the addition is just an error that was made in the drafting of the motion, and we will be bringing forward a revised motion showing that change. This again is a standard article we have every year. This is basically how we, how WindCam is funded. Any questions on Article twenty-nine? Okay. Again, we had a very busy day here at Town Hall. Article thirty, which we thought we were going to indefinitely postpone, we did just discover today, we did just find today that there was a prior year bill that just came in from our DPW or to our DPW from a utility. So we are going to be bringing, this article will no longer be indefinitely postponed, and I expect that we'll be bringing forward a motion under Article thirty to pay that prior year bill. Any questions? Probably not any questions because you don't have the motion in front of you, but we again will have that at table on November seventh for everybody. Article thirty-one, this is the Personnel Board article. Very happy to say that we have settled with our Police Patrol Union. This was the last union to settle. Our current contracts are FY twenty-three through the current fiscal year, FY twenty-five. So this contract that we've settled for them, with them, is for the current contract cycle. So there's several motions under this article. The first is to accept the updated compensation schedule that's based on the MOU that was agreed to between the town and the union. And then Articles two, three, and four actually fund the wage increases related to the FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, and FY twenty-five wage increases for that union. And then Motion five is unrelated to the Police Patrol contract. This is a proposed change to the town's personnel policy guide. Folks may be aware of this, it's called MCPPO certification. This is massive twos, it's Certified Public Purchasing Officer. Right now, we, it's an important certification for many of our staff to have, and we encourage people to get it. It is not a simple thing to do. There are many classes in certification and annual recertification required. So the current Personal Policy Guide allows for an annual stipend of $1,500 for folks who do have that MCPPO certification. And that current stipend is just allowed for people on either the professional technical, the PT, or CS schedules. This change would allow us to expand that annual stipend to anybody in town with the MCPPO certification. And I think it would help us encourage folks to be able to apply for and get that certification. Happy to take any questions on these Personnel Board articles. I'm not sure if Peter Schimetz is here from the Personnel Board. Roger, did you have a question? I just saw your hand go up quickly. Seeing no questions here. Article thirty-three is our grand finale, final article. There are currently no, oh, did I miss one here? We are missing Article thirty-two from this presentation. I apologize. So I will just ad lib here for you. Article thirty-two is an article that's being brought forward by the Select Board. This is a majority vote required in this article. For those who are avid watchers of our Select Board meetings, you've probably heard a lot of discussion about the Mystic School heat project. The Mystic School building is a building that's under the care and control of the school committee, but it houses both the town's Recreation Department as well as a private after-school summer camp program who leases a portion of the space through a lease agreement with the school committee. We've had some issues over the past many years, kind of peaking in the last year related to the heat at the Mystic School building. And so we have a project that we're moving forward primarily using ARPA funds, the project is currently out to bid, to replace a portion of the steam heat in that building with heat pumps. And so a large portion or not, maybe a third to slightly more of the building will remain on the current steam heat system. The design has been prioritized to really focus on areas where the steam heat piping itself is failing. That steam heat piping is wrapped in asbestos. So every, anytime we have to go do a repair of that steam heat piping, it requires emergency action and asbestos abatement. So we do have a project that, like I said, is currently out to bid. The bids are due to be opened on November seventh. So we put this article on, we have $900,000 that the board has set aside for use of ARPA funds for that project. Our cost estimate is a little bit higher, so we put this article on, and we'll have a true number, the number that's in the motion that you'll see in your motion book is just an estimate. We will have a true motion, a true number to revise this motion before you go down at a Town Meeting of what the ask is from free cash, should we need it to award the contract for this project. I apologize if we didn't have that information up on the slide, so I'm happy to take any questions. Or when you get your motion book, if you have questions, please feel free to email me. I see Chris Nixon has his hand up, so go ahead, Chris.
Hi, Beth, thanks. I actually did not get to watch this particular board meeting, but I did read about it in the newspaper. There was some back and forth about whether there might be one or two motions on this project, and I gather the board settled on one motion. I think that was your recommendation, Beth. I'm just curious, is, there is an ad alternate that you guys have discussed and that I think the board has supported. So is the $453,000, I understand it's based on a conservative estimate numbers, the number will be the number when the bids come in. But is the motion for the $453, is that supplemental, essentially supplemental funding above and beyond ARPA to cover what you imagine the base is, or is that a funding amount to also pick up the ad alternate?
Sure, that's a good question. So like I said, we have the $900,000 set aside from ARPA. The motion that's currently in the motion book is requesting $453,000. That includes the base bid. It includes an ad alternate, which is the base bid includes replacing the steam heat piping in the 1920s era portion, or portion of the steam heat piping in the 1920s era of the building. There's a 1950s addition that after discussion with the school committee, we did pull that out and bid that piece as an ad alternate. There's also construction administration services, and there's also required work by Eversource that we have to pay for the project for additional transformer out there. So all of that base bid, ad alternate, construction admin, and the Eversource costs are in that $453,000 initial motion that's in your motion book between November seventh, when we open the bids, and when we're ready to bring this article forward, which I think it'll probably be the last night of Town Meeting because we got to purposely put it at the end of at the end of the warrant to give ourselves enough time to fully discuss and vet that. We will have a revised motion, and that revised motion will reflect whether or not we're accepting that ad alternate or not.
And then, Beth, can I just ask a follow-up clarification?
Sure.
You know, if Christmas comes early and the bids come in and they're actually under for the base, if they're under $900,000, in other words, you could do the whole thing with ARPA, but the ad alternate goes beyond the 900. Do I have it right, depending upon what those bids are, that you and the board will have some discussion about, you know, the merits and the value of picking up that ad alternate, and that, you know, you may come back even if it's for a number less than $453, that'll be after some discussion and debate about whether it makes sense to pick up the ad alternate, which it may if the numbers are great.
Yes, absolutely. I think I think that that's a fair assessment, that there will certainly be a conversation with the board and with the school committee, once we have the numbers and to see what makes sense. Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Chris, before you jump off, there's a question from Roger Wilson in the Q and A about what the condition of the roof is on that building, and Pete Lawson, our Facilities Director, would have the answer to that, but he's not on this call this evening. So I'm wondering, Chris, if you have any knowledge of that that you might want to share?
What a great question. I cannot tell you when the roof went on. I can tell you that for the past nine years, Mr. Lawson's top three priorities for Mystic have been windows, heat, and electrical service, and the roof is not in those top three. I think the roof is in generally serviceable condition. All roofs certainly, you know, they have a life, but I don't know that, I don't know there's any roof replacement on the horizon in terms of a priority for Mr. Lawson. I think actually we might put like Parkhurst a little bit higher above Mystic, but that's my take. It's certainly not in his top three, and it hasn't been for at least eight years.
Thanks, Chris. I will just, because Chris mentioned the Mystics, that when the windows at Mystic, I will mention that the town was very happy to receive just recently a $75,000 grant from the state that will allow us to replace a portion most highly prioritized portion of the windows at the Mystic School to improve, you know, the heat situation in that building. So that is good news as well. Okay, so Article thirty-three, now we are at the last article. There are no motions received under this article. And I do want to go back to Article nine because I see in the Q and A that Josh Beers has joined us. And he, I think, is from the Climate Advisory Committee, is here to answer any questions about Article nine. So Josh, I think there was a question in the chat about whether this, adoption of this would impact gas stoves or not. So maybe you're able to answer that question.
Right, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Right. Yes, the specialized code allows for gas stoves in what's called the mixed fuel pathway. So you can have non-electric things for heating, cooking, or water heating, but you just need to meet additional standards if you do install fossil fuel burning equipment like a gas stove.
Thank you. And since Josh is here, if there's any, you know, we're going back a little bit, if there are any other questions that came up for people on Article nine, I'm happy to take a moment to answer them. Bill McPadden has his hand raised. Go ahead, Bill.
Sorry about that, that was a bad click.
Oh, no problem. Okay, so seeing no questions on Article nine, last call for any questions on any articles. For those of you who have not yet gotten your motion book, you should hopefully be getting them tomorrow, and if you're dying to know more after tonight's meeting, and you haven't gotten it yet, the motion book is posted up on the town's website under Town Meeting. So, and you can always come into Town Hall and pick up your motion book tomorrow.
So Beth, I would also like to add, on that is on the Town Meeting website under memos and reports, I have already added the Packer Ellis presentation that was getting to the Select Board in July. And that is also probably where we will be adding any recordings that we get, including with the government regs. If we're able to get that, we will place it there.
Thank you, Patty. All right. Thank you all for your time. Look forward to seeing you next week.
Thanks, Beth.
Take care. Bye. Bye.